Hang on.
Can you hear us now, Ben? Yeah, we can't hear you yet, Ben. We'll work on that. Now pull up the screen here. Is this where you want to start, or you want to start somewhere else?
That's perfect. And maybe just one comment before we dig into there about the audit opinion itself in the financial statement document. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the city this year, similar to prior years. That is the highest level of assurance we're able to give and otherwise known as a clean opinion. And then the reporting and insights document from the 2022 audit, that is our management letter or communication report. I wasn't going to go into it in detail in this meeting, but if there are questions, I'm happy to cover those after I'm done walking through the financial highlights. So for the financial highlights, if we can scroll down to page one, the first part that we're going to look at here is your general fund, fund balance. So your fund balance is your equity for your primary operating fund in the general fund. And we are looking here at 2022 results in blue compared to 2021. Your total fund balance at the top, end of year is about 7.2 million, just under 7.2 million. That is down slightly from the prior year. And then if we start at the bottom of the chart, look at our non-spendable fund balance, about 1.5 million. That's largely made up of advances to other funds, specifically TIF funds. You've got a little bit of fund balance tied up in donations that have been received and not spent. Assigned fund balance of about $1 million that has been earmarked for the 2023 budget, as well as some retirement dollars. Those earmarked funds could be changed and shifted to other purposes if you so choose. And that leaves us with about $4.4 million in unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Those are funds that have not been earmarked for any particular purposes. So then below the chart, we've got the summarized income statement for the year. If I started that middle column, that gives you what you had planned for in your final budget, which is a net loss of about $500,000. And then if we move to the actual column, you can see that your actual net loss in the general fund was about $138,000, which caused that decrease that we saw in your total fund balance at the top of the chart. But overall, your results were close to plan, but actually better than what you had planned for. And if you wanted to find the details for that, in the financial statements, you would look, starting on page 72. I would say the biggest variance that I noted was budgeted transfers out that were not made. So moving to the next chart, page two of this report, we're still talking about the general fund, still talking about your fund balance, looking compared to your policy. So your policy is to maintain unassigned general fund fund balance, a range of 20% to 25% of annual budgeted general fund expenditures. So that is mapped out in the blue and black lines on the chart. Your actual percentage at the end of the year was about 40.6%. That red line charts out your actual ratio there. And you can see that in each of the last five years, you've been over your policy range. I think the takeaway that we talked about in finance committee was just to potentially revisit that policy and see if that still makes sense, or if it makes sense to shift that to something different, based on information that you know now. So then, moving to page three, we'll look at your general obligation debt. What we've got here on this chart is your general obligation state statutory debt limit in the black line. And end of year, that is about $78 million. That's 5% of your equalized value. You've got your policy limit, which is charted out on the blue. That's slightly more restrictive than what the state has laid out for you. And then you've got your total general obligation debt outstanding mapped out on the red line. So about $36.7 million at the end of the year, up slightly from 2021. But what we also look at is that margin in between your actual debt outstanding and your state statutory debt limit. So that margin is growing compared to the previous year. A little bit more information on the debt types underneath the chart. So you can see your general obligation debt made up primarily related to your city funds. $2.1 million of that, $36.7 million is related to utility funds. In addition to that $2.1 million of general obligation debt, your utilities also have about $9.3 million in revenue debt that doesn't get factored into this chart or the calculation because it's secured by future utility revenues. There's a link there just for some additional data and metrics. It's a kind of a fun tool if you're interested in doing other comparative metrics. And then page four, we are still talking about debt here, but looking at what you spend in your governmental funds on principal and interest. And then we take that compared to your non-capital expenditures for those same governmental funds. To get this ratio here, you're at about 23.7% debt service expenditures to non-capital expenditures for 2022. Percentage-wise, decreased slightly from the prior year in terms of actual dollars. Below the chart, we've summarized about $4.9 million in principal and interest this year compared to about $4.1 million the previous year. So up in terms of real spend on principal and interest. We've also included some comparative metrics there on this chart in black for communities of similar size in Wisconsin. So you can see actual results are slightly higher than the median reference values there. Overall, no concerns. That is all I have for planned comments for this group. Happy to answer any questions on either this document or either of the formal two audit reports as well.
No questions tonight. Ben, can you test your mic again?
Testing, testing.
Awesome. We can hear you now. Thank you. Any questions from any council members? Go ahead.
I'll have one. Do you know why our general fund actually went down a little bit this year as opposed to last year? I mean, in your first graph?
The fund balance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's just the results of the operations from the current year. So you had the plan, the budget that the city passed with amendments, had planned for a net loss of 500,000. So you were expecting, if everything went according to plan, that your fund balance would have actually decreased more than it did.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is American Rescue Plan, ARPA.
This page is just in your packet for information only. At the meeting last, at the last meeting, it was, wondered how much was available in ARPA funds. So basically, the council has left approximately $600,000 that could be used for various purposes. And the committee of the whole has tentatively designated about another 148,000 of that. So right now, we've got about 452,000 available for Beanie Babies and Bubble Gum again. So like I said, this is just information only to answer some questions from our last meeting.
Are there any questions about the American Rescue Plan Act funds available? All right. And I know we've had a couple of communications with other groups. And I can, we can pass them on to you, but we've indicated that we didn't anticipate any further conversations till April. So that's kind of where we're at on that. We're also letting them know that they can apply with the Stoughton Community Foundation if they're a nonprofit. And then there's some other resources that may be out there that I've directed them to. So hearing no further questions.
Tim, just one quick comment. I happened to be at the community foundation meeting at the beginning. They have gotten applications from three nonprofits already.
Dave, when is the due date on that? And maybe give people who are listening, kind of information where they go, if you know, just go to the community foundation?
It would be listed on the Stoughton Area Community Foundation website. I'm going from memory, September 15th, but don't quote me on that date.
We've been emailing the links to the groups that have been contacting us to let them know, you know, how to get to their site at least. All right, anything else on this matter? Okay, we'll go on to the next one, and that's Stoughton Water Quality. 2022, 2023 lead and copper sampling results. Do you want the screen, Jill?
Good, Mayor. That'd be great.
Sure. There you go.
Excellent. Thank you. So I wanted to present this evening, and thank you for having me, is some good news. So there's a number of slides here that you've probably seen before, but I'm just going to walk through where we're at when our lead compliance. If remember back in 2019, we did exceed. We're actually in that, still in that standing right now. But we're actually finishing up some things, and I just want to share some information there. So I think it's always kind of good to start with, you know, what is the issue? And ultimately, I think it's interesting to me over time, as much as we've known that lead is bad for us, that there's just been many opportunities, and it's been kind of slow for regulation to catch up. So as we look at this graph, you can see the particular graph itself shows content of lead in children's blood. And seeing that reduce over time, because regulation has been implemented over time, one of the biggest ones was actually when we took lead out of gasoline. But it's, I guess, kind of surprising to me that we actually did not ban lead in plumbing fixtures completely until 2014. So it's an opportunity, I would say, across the board, and I'll highlight that a bit more as we get into this. But there's many, going to be many, even very new houses that we perceive as being new anyway, that's going to have some amount of lead in their fixtures. And so there's a threat there that continues. And why is this important? Because really, no lead is safe. So, you know, children are most susceptible, you know, pregnant mothers for the child, it's being, you know, grown. And then ultimately, up until five years old is what typically is considered to be that greatest risk time period. But it's been known that actually through adulthood, if high exposure as a child, they'll continue to have issues. And also just in general, lead for everyone is not good. And I think it's important to highlight the fact that, you know, lead is not in our drinking water. Our raw water does not contain any lead. It's actually have to come into contact with lead for it to be picked up into the water. So as you look at this graph, you know, basically now, and I'll get into this a bit more, as you're all aware, the mains don't have any lead. The services are now lead-free. But now, kind of our next opportunity is the lead contained potentially within the house, either through interior plumbing or the lead fixtures, or fixtures that contain some amount of lead. Now, I should preface that it was in 1986 within fixtures could then contain up to 8% lead. Since then, 2014, it's been completely banned. So lead/copper rule actually has been rewritten since our exceedance in 2019. What it does say though is the exceedance level is 15 parts per billion. That's considered that threshold. They've adapted some additional requirements, one we've gotten now, if you get to 10 milligrams per liter. And that's the 90th percentile. And the best way to really look at that is, no matter how many sample sets you take, where that sample set is, that would be the, you know, 10% down. Whatever that number is, that's your number that you look at as far as considering to be the 90th percentile. A big thing that they changed with this last rewrite of the lead and copper rule was ultimately inventory. Recognizing and determining exactly how much lead is out there, what services do you have, you know, from municipal utility? What threat is out there, and who all has lead, and where are those lead pipes? Sampling, and that's, I think, where this is, you know, the graphic comes back as far as looking at those potential threats. We do sampling. We actually are regulated to the tap. However, we don't actually have any control past that curb stop. So kind of the orange or red color, that's where our ownership stops. And then everything else in blue, we do own the meter, and that's kind of represented in the house. We are now changing out, and have been for a number of years, changing all of our lead meter, or all of our meters to be lead-free. So basically, we contact customers. We ask them if they'd be willing to participate in our lead sampling. We provide them with a bottle and some instructions. We want the water to stagnate for at least six hours, so the idea of it has to have contact with that lead. So if they have lead piping, or in the past when they had a lead service line, we want to allow time for that water to come in contact with lead. Then after that time, and usually what we, you know, request is it makes sense to, when you go to bed, know that you're going to take that sample the next morning. Don't use any water when you get up in the morning. And typically, all the samples are taken at the kitchen faucet. We do have a few that are actually a bathroom faucet. But most of them are in the kitchen faucet, excuse me. They take that first flush of water, the bottles about a liter. And then they set that outside. We pick that up and we send that in for testing. So this is looking back of our lead results over time. So lead and copper rule first kept implemented in 1991. So our first year of sampling was 1992. We exceeded that year. And then we exceeded in 2014, and then we exceeded in 2019. The thing that we found in 2019, you know, no, just one of those things of opportunities and determining, is we looked at our sample sites. We looked at where is all of our lead, where are these lead service lines? We found that actually our sample sites, 10% of those were actually copper services, that they were not containing lead. So I think based on that, I think it's a high probability, had we realized that and been sampling at all lead sites, we would have exceeded in many other years over time. But that wasn't the case here. But there were those times where we did exceed. As you're well aware, in 2021, we're able to receive that lead, that grant from DNR, through Department of Administration as well. And we're able to replace all lead services throughout the entire community and became lead-free. Some pictures of that effort. So since then, we've had to do, besides, when that exceedance occurred, there was many requirements that we had. One of which, we had to do a corrosion control study, looking at the water, determining how corrosive it is. The more corrosive your water is, the more likely that it will contain lead. We have also had to do a lot of public notices, public information, putting out in the press on an annual basis, saying we've exceeded, and our drinking water potentially could be unsafe. That has continued, actually, because we've got all these additional requirements where we have to go through two sets of samples consecutive, six months apart, basically sampling 60 different sites. So we accomplished that last fall, and then we accomplished that again this spring. Our 90th percentile in 2019 was 18. In 2022, it was 2.8, and in 2003, it was 4.2. And so when we started this effort, we had one in seven homes contained lead, is what we ultimately found in our inventory. Through the effort in '21, we have removed all of those lead pipes, and you can see dramatically how that changed our 90th percentile. So with all that public information that we presented out there, we do, in our annual report, we do share different ways in which customers can really try to minimize the potential for lead to be in their drinking water. Of course, one of those would be to change all your fixtures, you know, identify any potential areas where that lead could be, you know, coming into contact with the water. We also have shared information about flushing your entire water system. We did find, we did have one high sample in this last sampling round, and found that in that situation, that customer had a water leak. All the water drained out of their home, which would disrupt a lot of different particulars within the plumbing system itself, and then hadn't really, doesn't use their kitchen sink very often. So what likely happened was their aerator was full of different lead material that got flushed out when they lost pressure. When the pressure came back, then it all came to that kitchen sink. And then ultimately, when we took this sample, we had very high levels. They had 15 parts per billion there. All the other ones were quite a bit lower. And again, here's that kind of flushing information that we share out with our customers. So it's an opportunity really to go through your entire house, flush your entire interior plumbing system, and then also information for them to be able to clean out their aerators. And that's, we recommend them to do that at least annually. If they can, twice a year would be great. So with all this information, we've now actually completed all the compliance things that we needed to take care of. We've provided this information all back to DNR. And we have requested, and they are actually moving forward this, where we will now go back to 30 samples annually. That's what we had prior to their 2019 exceedance. We have requested also, or at least shared with them, that with continued sample results like we've had, we will be looking to see if there's an opportunity for us to sample every three years. So we're not, you know, given the fact that we've replaced all of our lead service lines, we've taken care of that issue. You know, we don't anticipate lead being an issue at all for Stoughton and ever, unless they, you know, lower those limits even further. And I think they will in time. I think this 10 parts per billion is a first kind of push with some extra requirements. I think that eventually, the 15 parts per billion will turn to 10, and they'll continue to lower that. But I think the more we can educate out to our customers exactly how they can eliminate lead within their home, our numbers will continue to go down. So that's all that I had to share. I just wanted to share the good, you know, all the great work that has been done, all of your efforts to make this happen, and kind of where we sit today. So we now are in, we are considered compliant. And so all of the information like that we have on all the bills that say we've exceeded and your water may not be safe has all went away.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, this was not part of your presentation, but I'd be interested at some point to learn more about what's in the works for PFAS. Because I know that, and I don't know if you have a brief summary, or want to save that for another day, but...
I can give you a brief summary, and then we can also share more on another day. We did, with PFAS being an evolving issue, we had not actually went forward with sampling until the DNR put in some regulation. Because what our fear was, is if we started sampling, we got some sort of result back, it was difficult to tell our customers, what does this mean? Is this good, bad, or otherwise? As soon as those, they've now put it to 15, or excuse me, put it to 70 parts per trillion. I see that coming down for sure. They're in the works of doing that. But as soon as that came forward, there was a voluntary sampling opportunity that we took, we participated in and worked with DNR for them to cover actually all the costs of sampling our four wells. We found in three of those wells, no detect whatsoever. And in one of our wells, we did find a small detect. With the new regulations that are coming out, we did evaluate that, and we're still far below that upcoming regulation. So we feel in very good place. We will continue those sampling and following through on that and see what opportunities as things kind of move forward to kind of evaluate if that, you know, PFAS level is changing at all at that well. Thank you.
All the person Schumacher?
I can't resist water questions.
I knew you couldn't.
And PFAS are notoriously difficult to sample, especially environmental sampling of them, because you have a greater probability to contaminate your sample with your collection device than you do actually sampling the material. So there's the challenges in that.
That is a huge challenge. And we actually went, and we've kind of been watching this PFAS issue very closely for a while. And so when we actually went forward and our, excuse me, our water system supervisor is ultimately the one who took the samples, for out of fear of contaminating those samples, he basically did not use deodorant, he did not go to McDonald's, you know, he did not get fast food. He basically isolated himself to make sure that he didn't cross-contaminate those samples in that process. You know, so it is something that we're very concerned about, because our levels could come back very high, and it could be some other source than actually our drinking water.
Yep. Then the other questions, then. You're not off the hook yet.
Right.
Right, right. The, well, and then we'll get through that hurdle of it, and then we've got, let's see, phosphates after that, and then PVCs and PCVCs and all of those after that.
And honestly, that's a concern I have, even from the perspective of, you know, when we looked at doing the lead service line replacement program and moved that forward, there was a lot of discussion of why didn't we require or allow, on the private side even, plastic? You know, that's a very widely-used water, you know, material for, and just without, with the unknowns. Copper's been around for a very long time, and unless you've got very corrosive water, you don't have copper issues or concerns from a health hazard. So we felt that it was appropriate to continue on with something we knew to be not an issue. And I would say that plastic, as much as it's been used for a very long time, it's still relatively new in the world of water and, you know, as a way to transport it. So I agree. I think there's going to be more and more opportunities, and we'll continue to follow those closely. And if you have more information, please feel, share it out. We're all interested.
The, when you were talking about the corrosion testing that you had to do on the, was that within the water loops, within the system loop? Or in discharge, or both?
Within our raw water. So basically, we had a consultants come in and actually go to each of our wells, take a lot of sampling, and really look to see the biology as well as the corrosiveness of our water, because we had concerns. I've been very opposed to us treating our water. I don't want to add anything that we don't absolutely need to. And so we felt that there was the potential that besides the corrosiveness of the water, that potentially changing or looking at the biology of the water had a chance of possibly impacting our lead sample results. So they looked at both. And ultimately, what we came out of that corrosion study was that we, because once we did that one, we were going to be required to do a second corrosion control, basically to look at all the chemicals that we would need to, polyphosphates or the phosphates, how do they work with our water, to see what would be most effective? So we said that, well, that would be eventually what we would look to do. But first, let us go through and replace all the lead service lines and give us that time and opportunity to do that.
Do you know what about our water pH tested out of the wells?
I don't. I believe it was very close to neutral. If I were to give you a guess, I would say 7.4, but I'm not solid in that number. But I can definitely get that data for you.
Yeah, I mean, for here, it's not uncommon to see anything between, anything above five. Anyway.
I'll let you know.
All right, I'm done sciencing now. I am.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? One thing you should know is, is we've been working on the Man Park Master Plan, and we've brought Jill into the conversations so we can understand from a utilities perspective, any potential future expansion down in the wastewater plant. And I think we have a meeting this week, don't we?
We probably do. I owe Dan some responses back, so I suspect that we do, but I, yeah.
Yeah, because as part of that plan, we not only have some electric utilities along the road, but there's some land down there where the shelter was. And we just really want to understand if there might be a future need, and, you know, PFAS is an unknown. So that might be a potential situation where we might need more treatment.
Absolutely, Mayor. And that's one concern that we have with these different things emerging out. And also then, just with phosphorus and ammonia has been one, that they're continuing to lower the limits there. So we, as we look to, right now, we had in the last year, we've moved from one to .6 for phosphorus. We anticipate, you know, we don't know the timeframe of this, but we believe eventually we'll either go to .2 or to .1. And once we get to that level, we can actually add some chemical, we can add alum that will help sequester that phosphorus even further. But we may also, to be able to deal with that issue, to get to those limit levels, that we would need some additional space at the wastewater treatment plant.
And I'm working on some experimental filtration ideas, that they'll be able to, maybe, I'm hoping this one will work. I just need to be able to contain it more carefully.
Thank you. I like it.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Tim.
Oh, go ahead.
The Finance Committee asked me to just update the council, the meeting dates for the capital improvement plan committee meetings. The first one is set for Thursday, August 10th at 6:00 PM. Second one is Thursday, August 17th at 7:30 PM. And that's delayed because of the Public Works Committee before that. And the third one is scheduled for Wednesday, August 23rd at 6:00 PM. All are scheduled to be in this room, and all are scheduled to be televised.
Can you just repeat those dates again?
Certainly. First, Thursday, August 10th, 6:00 PM. Second, Thursday, August 17th, 7:30 PM. And the third, Wednesday, August 23rd, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Yeah, if anybody has any conflicts, the earlier you can let us know, the better. Because obviously, for community, for the CIP Committee, it's, it's the chairs of each of the standing committees. So if you... of the standing committees, so if you are a chairperson of the committee, we would really need you there, we need four out of six to have a quorum. And then those meetings, I believe, do you run those meetings or do I? I don't remember.
I do.
You do. So you can let Dave know if you have a conflict with that and I would encourage the other council members if you can. Those are the meetings that are really the most informative as far as how we spend money. Our CIP, our capital improvement project money is for the money we borrow, so it's vehicles, buildings, you know, big expenses. So that's really the area of the budget that we're not limited by the, the state spending limits. We're limited by policy and by state statute on how much we can borrow and they will kind of review all of that at, at those initial meetings, so it's a really good opportunity to be educated on how this city budget works. All right, anything else under Communications? Any communications from council members? Hearing none. We'll go to the consent agenda and I understand that we don't have the council minutes in there from the last meeting, so we're going to pull them out. And we'll just, we'll vote on them at the next council meeting, we'll have two sets of minutes in there.
I've noted that.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda without the council minutes in it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Reeves, thank you. Would anybody like anything in the consent agenda acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. We have no old business, so that takes us to new business and under new business, we have two vacant Aldermanic District appointments we would like for your consideration tonight. We have a vacancy in District One. We do have one application, the application is in your packet. Christina is zooming in, she was a little bit under the weather, so she decided to zoom in tonight. And then we also, Patrick is here as well. So I guess at this point I would basically ask the council how, how you want to handle this. Do you, we, we have the answers in the packet, do you want them to come up or introduce themselves and make a decision and, you know, what kind of process would you like to use? I know city attorneys done a little bit of background, is there something you want to help guide us through on this one as well?
The only thing I wanted to do is make a, a small correction, so I know there was a proposed motion language, so if the council does decide that they want to appoint one of these individuals to the vacancies, there was a misunderstanding on my part, I, I thought it was going to be for the remainder of the unexpired term, but it would actually be until a special election is held in April. So I forwarded some language to Regina, so she's got, I guess, the exact language if, if there's a, a motion that wants to be, it needs to be made. Basically, this appointment would just be until the council can call a special election. The timing on it is very specific in statute, so you can't just call the special election now, you actually have to do it in November because of the, the day count that has to be between when you call it and when the election's held. So the motion language is very specific to, to that. But otherwise, you know, this is sort of like your own interview process, you can have as much or as little discussion as you would like tonight and ultimately decide if you want to make the appointments to fill these vacancies.
So, under that scenario, this vacancy, they would serve until, would it be until April then?
Yeah. Correct. And then we just need to make a note that in November, the council needs to call a special election.
Okay, and that's something typically I think the clerk would probably do.
Correct. So I'll...
So she has to bring something, or you'll draft something for the clerk to bring here?
Yes, I will touch base with Candy and we will put reminders in our calendars to make sure everything's done in November.
Okay. And so is that the intent of the council? I guess that would be the first thing we want to clarify. That's, I think that's how we understood it, I think something got lost in the messaging, but we want to make sure that's the direction you want to go. I think that's consistent, isn't it, with what we've done?
Yeah, and I actually went back to our minutes from, no, I can't find them, when we decided that and that's what it said.
Okay.
So from, I think it was June 27th or something like that, that's what was in the minutes of how we decided to do it.
Okay, so that answers that. So if, if you choose to select, we have one for each vacancy in District One and one for District Four. If you choose to select one or the other or both, then the understanding it would go until April. So that kind of clarifies that. And then the next thing is, is how would you like to handle the interview process? Anybody have any thoughts about that or, go ahead.
Well, and maybe Brett can, because he was one of the last ones that we did it this way, and that was a long time ago. I think we had them come up and just kind of introduce themselves and why they're interested in being on City Council and then it's, anybody else can ask them questions. Does that sound reasonable?
All right.
Within reason, questions.
I see people nodding their head. Anything else? Otherwise, we can start with that. Do you have a preference on who we start with?
Who, was it District Four?
District Four was the first vacancy.
Yep. Why don't we do it that way?
So we'll start with District Four. So District Four, if I can find the, Patrick Butler is here in person and we have the questionnaire in the packet for Patrick. It looks like the microphone is on, you might want to adjust it a little bit and then you can maybe just introduce yourself and I don't know if you want him to summarize the questions or just introduce himself and tell us a little bit about him.
I guess just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you, about why you're really interested in being on City Council. So pretend like we're your constituents and you're going to a door, why, why, why should we vote for you?
All right. So I just realized as I was sitting here, I've lived in Stoughton now for nineteen years and one week, exactly. And it's, this is, I've lived here longer than I've lived anywhere consecutively in my life, which is an interesting thing to think about. Poor Brett is on my wife and my walking route, so I talk his ear off from time to time about various things here and there. And I've always taken an interest in politics, it's what I went to school for, which is of course why I work at a bank now or a credit union now. But what really kind of interests me is the growth of the city. I grew up in Onalaska, Wisconsin, and Onalaska's grown, you know, tremendously. I look at, you know, some of the other towns and I just, I want to make sure that Stoughton grows smart, but continues to grow. And it's, it's a beautiful area. We're kind of in an interesting place geographically, we are not quite close enough to be a true bedroom community for Madison and I think that that's fine because we have a real unique character, but it can only take us so far. I think what really triggered my interest was when they, when Stoughton Trailers held the public meeting for the Linnarood property, which is right in our backyard. We live, our backyard is Sand Hill Schools parking lot. And so I went to that and I was really interested to hear the rationale behind why they wanted to do what they wanted to do and that was after they had talked with their employees and found that a lot of them were working here but living elsewhere and why was that? And like I said, I talked Brett's ear off and he's talked to me a couple times about maybe stepping up and being more active. I am the committee chair emeritus for my son's scout troop, Troop 167 here in Stoughton and...
Just lost the sound from the room unfortunately. That's, that's good, I got it.
And my son's sixteen and so my, I still want to be active with the troop, but I have a little bit more open time now, so I decided, you know, you can, you can kind of just talk about things or you can actually participate.
Since we only have one candidate, I mean, we could certainly ask questions if you want. Usually if there's more than one, we want to make sure we ask them both the same questions to be fair. So anything you want to do as far as questions, feel free, I guess, I guess that's totally up to you guys. But I think a lot of the, you know, questions that we had in the packet are good and we appreciate you, you know, doing thoughtful answers.
Yeah, I apologize for the length, I sometimes talk a lot.
You're good right in. All right, are there any other questions? So I guess as far as the process, I guess we'll do them individually. I would imagine that we could have a motion and a vote and if it was, you know, in the affirmative, then I think Dave is prepared to, to do the swearing in tonight in Candy's absence. And then there would be some paperwork to sign and, you know, things to, you know, assign to you and working with our IT. So I think that's kind of how it works in a nutshell.
Yeah, I, I would say that's the, the cleanest ways to do each one individually, separate votes.
Okay. All right, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion for Mr. Butler.
I'll make the motion to accept Mr. Butler's, I don't guess, appointment to District Four for the remainder of, until the special election.
Oh, second.
In April, 2024.
All right, a second by Johnson, is that verbiage good enough and Dave, were you able to capture it?
Yes.
And you guys can work on cleaning it up if it needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, I think I got the intent.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor or does it, does it need to be a roll, do you know? I don't remember.
Uh, the statute just says majority vote, so I don't think it needs to be a roll call necessarily.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, welcome. And then Dave will swear you in and then you're on the hot seat right off the bat. And then your, your seating will be determined by the council president.
But you can sit wherever.
We have a couple options.
Yeah. Take your place. Go further.
So what do you want to do for the swearing in? You want to do that at the podium? All right.
Swearing in now, swearing ad comes with all the questions you have on the budget. I state your name, oh, I'm sorry, raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Patrick Butler.
Having been appointed to the office of City of Stoughton Alderman District Four, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
I was hoping you wouldn't make me read all of that. Thank you.
All right. You should pull up the chair, thank you, appreciate having you. And then if you, when you go to speak, you basically just push the button till the red light comes on. All right, you want to give a... Would you like to give a speech or you just want to sit there and relax?
I do not come to practice.
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, welcome. All right, so then in District One, we also had one application and Christina is on Zoom right now and I guess we can kind of do the same thing. Christine, if you want to just unmute yourself and you can kind of introduce yourself and kind of let us know what interested and why you want to be on the City Council.
Good evening, sorry I couldn't make an appearance, I've caught one of these ugly bugs that's going around this summer, didn't want to share that with you all this evening as well. I have known Patrick, I think, the entire time that I've lived in Stoughton. Stoughton is the longest that I've also lived in any community. I had a rather unique upbringing with a father that was a, he's retired now, but a federal prison warden. So we lived all over the country, different, lots of different, nine different states by the time I was sixteen. The majority of them were always in small towns. So I've had a lot of different and diverse experiences growing up and living in different communities and have chosen to make Stoughton and Wisconsin my home state and my hometown. I got involved in the community here about four years ago as, was on the Board of Directors for Taste of Stoughton and I think it was around that time that I really realized what a gem of a community that we have here. And it was around that time that we started to grow and develop and add more houses and businesses to our community and I just want to be involved and be a part of that because I think that we have a lot to offer, Dan County, I think we have a lot to offer the residents that we have here. I think that growth for a small town that's rich in history and culture such as ours is important. I think it's important to educate people on progress and how important that, that can be to our city and that we do it safely and environmentally friendly and with everyone's thoughts and opinions and considerations in part. So I, it's all I can think of off the top of my head, I apologize, I am really under the weather.
All right.
Do you have other questions for me there?
I don't remember what I said last time, I would like to... Motion to approve Christina to District One vacancy until the special election in April of 2024. So moved.
Second by Alderperson Reeves. All right, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, so we have to do the virtual swear in. So when you're ready, Dave and Christina.
Okay, Christine, if you can raise your right hand, please.
I can screenshot it.
I state your name.
Christina Wazian Scanlon.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of City of Stoughton Alderperson District One, but have not entered upon the duties thereof, swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability, so help me God. Do you so...
I solemnly swear.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
When you are feeling better, if you could come into City Hall and ask the city clerk and they'll provide this document for you to sign.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both, sure. Ray, it's nice to give you the full speed again. Later on in the agenda, we'll talk about your community appointments. We would go to item number seven on the agenda, which is Resolution 116 of 2023 and that would be the accepting financial statements and management letter reports dated December 31st of 2022. And this one went through the Finance Committee and the chairperson is Alderperson Schumacher. You can introduce this one.
All right, R116 of 2023 is a resolution to accept the financial statements and management letter reports dated December 31st, 2022. So moved.
Second by Alderperson Johnson, Alderperson Schumacher.
We had the... We had the presentation from Baker Tilly earlier on these. Nobody had any questions on those, so we had a clean bill of health.
All right. Any questions pop up since our presentation? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And is there anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next item, Resolution 119 of 2023, comes from the Plan Commission, Alderperson Caravelo.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution 119 of 23. Resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, conditionally approving the preliminary plat for lots one, three, and four within the 51 West subdivision, and ISO move.
Second.
A second by Alderperson Peyton. Alderperson Caravelo, you want to explain this one to us?
This, just as it reads here, this is a, to create 38 twin home lots. Or wait, is that backwards? Yes, it is to create 38 twin home lots, which would create 19 duplex structures within the 51 West subdivision.
All right, thank you. And Director Sheil, is there anything you'd like to add?
Not specifically, other than this is in the far northwest corner of the 51 West development. As part of the development plan, we saw this was identified for this type of housing. However, having them split into single, separate ownership of each side is advantageous to the, the character of the neighborhood here. It helps to facilitate ownership and pride in, in the neighborhood as well. So this is a preliminary plat. They'll, they'll come back with a final plat after the council approves the preliminary plat.
It seems like there's a trend on these.
There is.
The trend, there seems to be more zero lot line duplexes and being built in our community right now. And I don't know if that's the affordability issue or what do you think is motivating?
I think that's primarily, it allows for homeownership at a different price point. Obviously, it's slightly less than buying a single family detached facility, but it has much of the same amenities. So it's, it does provide a different price point for first time buyers or even any buyer.
Are these ones here, are these the zero entry ones? Do you know yet?
I don't believe these will be zero entry. They may still have basements in these, but I, it's not, not a requirement one way or the other in this development.
Okay.
Those are the twin lots? And so zero entry means that no basement or zero entry means, what does that mean?
Oftentimes a zero entry means where you would likely not have a basement, but you'd have at great entrance from the front door to the garage and access into the facility all on the same level without barriers in elevation to get into the facility. Some of our older community members are finding those homes to be suitable. Some homes within the Parker Cole subdivision that we're talking about tonight actually are being constructed in that manner. Many times you're, you're older, less able bodied people really gravitate to that type of facility. And they, oftentimes they don't need as many square feet if you've got a basement. Some people don't need the square footage that's afforded by one with a basement.
What, can you explain what is the square foot for these twin?
I can't, I can't describe exactly what the floor plan on any of these are. But generally, you're, you're probably in that thousand to fifteen hundred square foot per floor on a half of a duplex for a zero entry model.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And are there anybody opposed? That motion carries. Item number nine is Resolution 120 of 2023. And this one also comes from the Plan Commission. And Alderperson Caravelo is our council rep for the Plan Commission.
Yes, this is Resolution 120 of 2023. Resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, conditionally approving the preliminary condo plat for eight thirty-nine to eight nine, or eight thirty-nine to nine eighty-one, North Page Street, and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Schumacher, Alderperson Caravelo.
And there's one thing I want to say about this one because I think there's a little confusion about the term condo that's in this. This is a condo land use definition for business, for commercial business units, not to create a residential condo type situation. So I think there was a, a little bit of wondering about the wording of this one with that condo word in there. But this is the, at the, down on Page Street that I'm trying to remember what it's described as now, but it's got a gas station component.
Sort of famous Yeti's is gas station, the liquor store.
Liquor store.
And there's, the mini warehouses are part of this as well, I believe.
And basically, the owner is looking to split off the gas station component and then create the, the other business units will be the condo units.
Can you explain what that is? Is that just that they each, each owner of these now units own that unit, sort of like a condo?
Yeah, they, they could sell off the unit numbers or the unit areas. Generally, in the condominium plat, the land is generally held in common. So you have access across the properties, subject to whatever the agreement says. But generally, then they could have ownership of the specific unit area that's identified within the condominium plat. As was mentioned, I think the original intent is, the owner does intend to sell off a part of it and maintain ownership of some of the others. But in the future, he may elect to sell off some of these other units separately.
So, I mean, I'm, is he planning on closing the mini mart? I mean, the gas station, but the mini mart? I'm just concerned about creating like a food desert in that area next to a lot of lower income people if we close a food source.
There was no indication of them closing any of the businesses there. It's all related to creating an opportunity to sell off portions of the property. You can't create separate parcels, if you will. You have to have certain street frontages so they couldn't create additional lots without utilizing this condominium plating process.
And I think sometimes they use this process so they can share services and distribute the cost for snow plowing and landscaping and such. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Hey, I want that.
Go ahead.
Just that, like in that, what would be the southwest corner of that one? Where they said that there was one space potentially developable, is that correct, Brad?
Yeah, the, the unit area that's identified as eight thirty-nine is unbuilt at this point. Any construction that would occur there has to go through the Planning Commission review process. It just creates the unit area of this condominium plat.
Anything else?
So right now, this whole area is owned by one person and he wants to sell off the individual parcels. Just because it's hard, it's easier to sell a parcel by parcel versus the whole.
Yeah, you couldn't create separate lots, for example. Like I described, you'd have to have so much frontage. You'd have to have access and separation as well as setback distance requirements. So this affords them the opportunity to sell off one portion of that building, if you will, or, or that parcel.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R121 of 2023. This also came from the Plan Commission.
Yep. R121, 2023, approving a certified survey map to create one lot and one outlot from lots nine and 10 of the Chalet subdivision, and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Peyton, Alderperson Caravelo.
And this is a request to create one duplex lot by reconfiguring two lots on Chalet Court. And this one lot would then be fronted on Chalet Drive. And I believe the intent generally is for the developer to create a, I think it's two more lots that would be fronted on Chalet Drive and basically, I guess, abandoning Chalet Court at some point, that bulb that is Chalet Court. But I don't know if that's addressed in this or in the rezone or.
I can give some additional insight. This area is currently platted, so where you see the area that's identified to be proposed lot one is part of an existing lot nine, lot 10. And you'll notice all these parcels that actually surround the Chalet Court area is platted. This Chalet Court is not improved. The street has not been improved. Some time ago, this gentleman was actually trying to devise a way to develop this site. It looks like he's now trying to, to create a way where, as was mentioned, to develop three duplex parcels fronting Chalet Drive and possibly dedicate the additional land to supplement the park plan that's shown on the back of this. But that's really a future step. Initially, that you can see that there's some wetlands that are mapped here. There's a 75-foot wetland buffer that has to be maintained. The wetland that extends from Chalet Drive back to the, to the west, to the larger wetland area, a portion of that may be able to be exempted. But currently, regulatory rules don't allow for them to be considered or issuing letters related to those exemptions. So currently, he's attempting to just create the one parcel as described. This lot one, it's in the bottom right-hand side of the plat. Outlot one, that's now also created as part of the CSM, is the remnant part of lots nine and 10. If things progress, as was discussed, there would be an opportunity to abandon, not necessarily abandon, but there's a discontinuance of a public way. The Chalet Court is a public way that's actually been platted. There's a process that would have to be gone through to discontinue that public way and potentially dedicate additional land to the city related to that. Lots 14 and 15, as well as the discontinued Chalet Court, then could be considered for potential splitting into additional parcels in the future. Again, this is a staged process. First step only encompasses the creation of lot one along with outlot one. The next item on the agenda is really to go through the rezoning process to create a buildable zoning on this newly created one to allow for the duplex unit to be constructed there.
Alderperson Reeves.
Couple of questions. So what is the zoning now where he wants to build?
It's, it's RH, Rural Holding, doesn't allow for construction.
Okay. And so I, I remember in a previous, some previous parks meetings, and those of you on parks can help me with this. So is the parkland a maybe? Or has he committed to donating that? Does he own it? I guess I'm just trying to figure out how, how does the wetland and the possible parkland figure into his plans?
So currently, when this was platted, when the Chalet subdivision was platted, the area in the back portion of the screen is shown as parkland. So this area is actually, was dedicated as parkland in the 80s or 70s when this was, area was created. So were these lots. These lots were created as well, but they were never improved. The street was never installed as Chalet Court. So the time that will be discussed about what happens to the remnant areas to the west would have to be determined before he could proceed with an additional split, if you will. If he creates another, attempts to create lot two, just to the north of this lot or across lots 14 and 15, you know, that would preclude the, that, that would create the need to discontinue Chalet Drive or Chalet Court as well as overcome that question as to what would happen to the remnant lots in the back portion. I'll say lot 13, and lot 12, and lot 11. So I think at that point, it's my understanding that's probably the direction he'll go is to dedicate that land to the city. Not to be finalized, but that's the direction he seems to be heading at this point.
Alderperson Caravelo, is that consistent with the conversations you've had?
I believe so.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one is Ordinance 23 of 2023. And I think before we get into that, maybe Rodney, can you help me kind of walk through the difference between a resolution and an ordinance for our new members?
Sure. I sometimes sleep at a Holiday Inn Express and, and the city attorney is here as well to fill this in. But the, the resolution is a more formal way to solidify an action by the council as opposed to just a motion. Sometimes the council makes just a motion. A resolution tries to articulate that motion more, more descriptively and might include documents and exhibits. An ordinance is a document or a process in which you pass an ordinance. Our ordinances actually need to go through a first and a second reading to be adopted. There's certain laws. Your ordinances, for, for instance, your code of ordinances, all the regulations that you govern are truly ordinances. This is a zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance is implementing a standard related to the zoning, but it's a process in which we actually have to adopt an ordinance as opposed to a resolution. So in the hierarchy, at the bottom is kind of your, your motions. The council takes motions. I, I think secondarily, you've got the resolutions. And then the higher stage is the adoption of an ordinance. A number of planning features, comprehensive plan amendments, zoning amendments, official map amendments generally are done by ordinance as opposed to resolution.
Anything you want to add, Attorney Manthe? I love putting you guys on the spot.
No, I think Rodney did an excellent job of explaining that. I mean, essentially, your ordinance has the force of law. It's, it's setting regulations or requirements that people have to abide by. So for instance, we've got the zoning ordinance here that's setting land use regulations regarding what they can and can't do with their property. The, the resolution that we just discussed, you know, that's sort of directing action to be taken or formalizing action. Like Rodney said, it can include conditions and things like that are just more memorialized in writing. That way, it's clear what the conditions of that approval are. So it's sort of like an approval to do something. In this case, combine those lots, or in the previous case, to combine those lots. So it's probably just a different way of explaining what Rodney just said, which so expertly did. So I don't know if either, if you have any questions. But essentially, this is just creating a law that's going to bind the uses of land on this newly created parcel.
Thank you very much. And as Rodney mentioned, typically, we have a first and second reading. The first reading on this one is tonight, which is the introduction of this ordinance. And then the assumption would be, is we'd bring it back and, and actually have a second reading where we'd vote on it. There are times when we will ask, or council members may prefer to waive an ordinance second reading, or waive the first reading and go right to the second reading. And then in that case, if, if we do that, the first step we would have to do is to make a motion to waive our rules. And if that motion passed on a two-thirds majority, then we could go immediately to the second reading and vote on it that same night. So that does happen sometimes if there's a time sensitive item or if there's, usually it's a public safety item or there's a deadline or something like that. We don't do that unless we feel that it's important. But usually on a public safety item is usually the priority. Anything you want to add, President Hirsch?
No, I was going to say, like, this one is probably no time sensitivity. We're okay with going the normal route.
Okay. So having said all that, Ordinance 23 of 2023 came from the Plan Commission. Alderperson Caravelo, you want to introduce this for a first reading?
Sure. This is a first reading of Ordinance 23 of 2023. This is a first reading of Ordinance 23 of 2023, an ordinance amending the zoning classification at CSM Lot 1, part of Lots 9 and 10 Chalet subdivision in the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin. And this is regarding the previous agenda item to change this from zoning RH to TR6, two-family residential.
You want to explain what that means, Rodney? The zoning change?
I thought he did an excellent job. But this particular, it's pretty straightforward. It allows for the duplex, which will allow for the twin home or duplex structure to be built on this particular parcel. The Rural Holding is a, I'll call it a temporary zoning. Generally, it's an unbuildable zoning within our zoning districts. Generally found that in areas that are undeveloped, waiting to be rezoned for a buildable type zoning to be attached to those properties. And this area is set in that standard for many years, decades, actually. So now placing a buildable zoning attached to it would allow for that construction to occur.
Help me with my memory. On a rezoning, is that, do we require a public hearing for that?
We do. And we did have the public hearing at the Plan Commission. That's a good thing to highlight for the new council members. The Plan Commission does hold the public hearing for rezoning activities. The recommendations come out of the Plan Commission prior to coming to the council.
Hopefully, that helps you guys. Any questions on this one? And if not, what happens is this will typically come back at the next meeting for the second reading. And if you have a question between now and then, feel free to reach out to city staff. And we recommend you do that really at any issue. If you're contacted by a citizen member on an issue, you can't possibly know all the answers. We don't, I don't know all the answers. So when people contact me, I typically will forward it to the staff member and get their input before I reply. And that's a pretty good rule of thumb. That way, we can make sure we're giving out consistent information. And you will get emails and phone calls. That's part of the gig. But if you do, we're here to help you answer those inquiries. So otherwise, this one will be back at the next meeting. If something comes up, just let us know. We'll go on to the next item, which is Resolution R122 of 2023. And this one came from Stoughton Utilities. And I'm, my mind's going blank who our rep is. It's DJ. Other person Peyton.
Hey, how's it going? All right, I'll present Resolution 122, 2023, authorizing the partial release of a platted public utility easement on Lot 141 of John Nygaard's Virgin Lake Estates, or address 2108 Woodview Drive, recorded as document number 5618013, Dane County Registry. This was approved by Utilities Committee, regarded, recommended to the common council.
And you?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by other person Jensen. Anything else you want to explain on this one? Otherwise...
I'd be happy to give Jill the opportunity to provide more context. I think in our meeting where we discussed this, and you can correct me, is this happens occasionally, an easement is unused by Stoughton Utilities, and then sometimes a property owner will request to recuperate that or to maintain ownership of it. So this is the process of allowing to acede and give that back to the property owner.
I think it would be helpful to explain what an easement is, because they're going to get a lot of terms. There's going to be easements, there's going to be public right-of-way.
Prochements.
There's going to be, you know, different terminology, so...
I can take the easement question if you want.
Okay, go ahead. All right.
Yeah, so I'm going back to my property law class, my first year of law school.
That was just yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes. So basically, you know, when you own property, you've got sort of this bundle of sticks, of different rights. So one of those is sort of, at least in this context, the utility easement is, we don't own the property, the underlying real estate, the, somebody else owns it, but we've retained one of those property interests or obtained it in some manner. So usually, you would obtain an easement just to put infrastructure in, so whether it's sewer pipes or water pipes or something along those lines. So it's just that bundle of stick, that one stick that we have out of that entire bundle of rights. And apparently, we're not using that right at the moment. So it's just basically, we can decide to have it and use it, or not use it, or give it away.
And the easement is not specific just to us, is it?
It is not. And actually, that's what we would, if you, you know, move forward and approve this release, that easement does remain in place. It's just Stoughton Utilities is relinquishing our rights to it. And by our zoning code, which I very much appreciate, does restrict basically what can be put in that easement. Ultimately, fences is a big one that is typically comes across. And in this situation, actually, this property owner did put in a fence, recognized after the fact there was this easement, and so then came forward requesting the release of it. There is a, there's a few things here, though, that I want to kind of continue to share here so that we make sure that we want to move forward with this. There are some issues in what's been presented here in the packet. First, the agenda has the wrong document number. The correct number is actually within the resolution. But to add to this is there is an easement actually in the back property line of this property, on the north property line. We want to retain that and do not want to release our rights. We do have electric utility infrastructure within that easement. It's the westernmost part, but only 118 feet, starting at the southwest corner. We did talk through this at the Utilities Committee. The unfortunate thing is when we move these materials forward to council for the review, our modified, they, we, in the end, submitted the wrong documentation. To kind of further explain what we're actually trying to do, but Exhibit B is actually correct. So it's that west property line that we're looking to release that easement at the request of this property owner, but only approximately 118 feet, starting at the southwest corner. So I guess the second whereas, whereas the release will contain, will consist of releasing the six-foot easement. My thinking here is that runs the west property line for approximately 118 feet, starting at the southwest property corner, with other public utility easements located, whereas the parcel contains, currently, is currently recorded. So I think we need to modify, or if you'd prefer, if we want to table this, I can bring this material back with those corrections.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a couple of choices. We can try to modify the language on the floor, or we could postpone the vote on this and bring back an updated version at the next meeting. Is it time-sensitive?
It is not time-sensitive. Actually, this gentleman, the, you know, the fence was built, and actually, we've been sitting on this, this was actually approved by the Utilities Committee in May. There was some engagement with the property owner himself, and there was just some delay in there, and so they're bringing it forward. And that's actually, I think, why we ended up submitting the wrong documents, as opposed to, you know, reflects 124 feet, but we want to retain that north six feet on that west corner.
All right. I see a couple of microphones on. Did you have questions or comments?
I was just going to make a motion to postpone the vote on this one until the information can be corrected in it.
A postpone?
Second.
Okay. By Schumacher, and a second by Reeves. And a postponement just means we'll bring it back at a future meeting. And with Robert's rules, they've kind of transitioned from table to postpone, because if you table something, you can't deliberate on it. And at some point, you have to take a vote to take it off the table and put it back on. So they recommend that we postpone items. So that's what the motion is. Did I explain that right?
Yeah.
I went to a class, that was a few years ago now. Good stuff, huh? Yeah. Anything I missed?
See?
Go ahead and fill in the blanks.
No, I think that was a good explanation. Yeah, generally, I personally don't like using the tabling motion, so I appreciate the postponing.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on this one? We'll tidy it up and bring it back if everyone's okay with that. Did you have anything?
No, I was going to say, if I recollect from the Utilities Commission, the intent of the resolution is pretty much agreed upon. It's the language that just we need to change to make sure that's accurate. I would, I would propose an amendment for it in order to, like, clean it up, but postponement is perfectly fine.
Okay. And certainly, you could reach out to Jill if you have some language you want to share with her.
It's good.
All right. Sounds good. So all in favor of postponement, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, getting a flavor for everything tonight, is R122 of, oh, yeah. Next one is Item 13, is the engagement letter for the city of Stoughton and the Anderson annexation. Do you want to, you're doing this one?
I can just give a quick explanation. So the city did receive an annexation request. Unfortunately, our firm is conflicted out on this one. So we just, we can, if the property is annexed, ultimately, then we can work on the development or anything going forward. We just cannot handle the annexation itself. So we referred, in talking with the city and Mayor Swadley, we referred them to Al Reuter, who's done work for the city in the past. But, so he's just going to be handling the annexation piece of this particular property.
So your firm already does business with the other township, is that?
I can't get into details of that, but...
Just a conflict.
There is a conflict.
There's a conflict. Okay. All right. It's the property?
Where is the...
Here, the annexation request, we had the first reading at the last meeting. It's on the, essentially, the northwest quadrant of Rutland Town Line Road and 51 West, or Highway 51, just north of Rutland Town Line Road, yeah. Across the roadway from where Stoughton Trailers is working to develop. The second reading for that will come back at your next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, we just really, we're looking for a motion and approval in order to have Al Reuter represent us on this issue, if there's a need.
Certainly, a motion to support moving forward with this is appropriate.
Okay. All right. Is somebody willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by President Hirsch. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Item 14, R123 of 2023. This one comes from Public Works, which is, other person Mieski is the chairperson of Public Works.
This is Resolution 123 of 2023, acceptance of public improvements made by ROB Real Estate Brokerage and Builders LLC for the Parker Coal Edition. And this was approved by Public Works. So, a nice move.
Is there a second? A second by other person Reeves. Anything else you'd like to add, other person Mieski?
Not really.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add, Director Shield?
The public improvements have been made to our satisfaction. There is a warranty period, as well as some of the items that are listed in our exhibit are not yet accepted as part of the development agreement. We don't accept the stormwater improvements as part of this small six-lot subdivision until after 80% of the homes are constructed on that site. So that's one of the reasons for the conditional approval, if you will. One of the other conditions that we had in our development agreement required us to accept the public improvements before we could issue occupancy permits for the buildings that are being constructed there. There's a couple that are very close to that. We've gone through the public improvements and are comfortable with the resolution as written to support adoption.
And then Director of Public Works, Abir, is here as well, and he works really closely with the planning department. Director Abir, anything you want to add on this one?
Yeah, not to that one, like, you have a next-gen item to talk about, but on this one, I have nothing further.
All right. I know oftentimes, Director Shield will attend the plan, or the Public Works meetings on these types of issues. So, you know, sometimes you might hear from Rodney, sometimes you might hear from Brett on some of these types of things. Any questions or comments on the public improvements? I see other person Peyton, and then Schumacher.
Just really quickly, I'm still acclimating to locations within the city. Where is this Parker Coal Edition?
Yeah. It's a very small six-lot subdivision on the very south end of Page Street. Isham Street extends to the west of Page Street, so that's this part. You might also have heard us talk about Magnolia Springs.
It's next to it.
That's the southern extension of Robey Road that we've approved a plat related to that. Construction hasn't started, but that's part of a development that'll extend Page Street to the south.
Got it. Okay.
Other person Schumacher, did you have some? Director Idler?
I apologize, I did not catch you seconded the motion.
Oh, that was...
I think I did. I think I did.
Yeah, other person Reeves.
Thank you.
Good bet. Any other questions on this one? And the public improvements are typically stormwater, roads, sidewalks, one of my missing. Okay. Could be any one of those things. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is also from Public Works for a first reading, and this is Ordinance 24. Other person Mieski?
This is Ordinance 24 of 2023, creating Sections 58-14 of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the prohibition of fishing in city-owned stormwater ponds that use mechanical aeration devices. This was approved by Public Works 5-0.
All right. Anything you want to elaborate on?
This is first reading, and this came about due to the fact that we have had issues with damage to our aeration devices due to fishing line in the stormwater ponds, causing extensive amounts of maintenance costs.
I'm confused. Is it fishing pond or not? I mean, is it retention pond? There is no fishing retention.
Oh, there is.
How do you know?
There is.
Have you tried?
I don't know.
Director Abir, you want to, you want to elaborate on this one? People do fish in our retention ponds, right?
At the end of that dispute, there is fish in the retention ponds. And this one in particular is that Eastwood Pond, and unfortunately, on two different instances, we did have fishing line that wrapped in the, wrapped in the impeller of the aeration device. This last time, it caused irreparable damage, and we had to replace the aerator. At first, we thought that we did not want to prohibit fishing because we want that recreational activity in the community. However, after further thought on this, and a couple of years, and twice now that this has happened, we feel we want to bring this in front of you to restrict fishing in those ponds that have aeration devices. So that'd be Eastwood Pond, and also Rotary Pond, I'm sorry, Rotary Park Pond.
Haven't heard of that one.
Yeah, Brett, do you know how fish are getting into those ponds? It's just kind of interesting.
I'm going to guess it's, you know, birds, you know, transport fish, because there's a, you know, kind of a wildlife area behind this pond in particular. It could be people, you know, go fishing and then put fish in the pond or self-stock the fish in these ponds. So there's a lot of carp, there's bass in there. There's definitely fish in this particular pond.
I'll dodge for the pond on Greg Trail without aeration. We have bluegill, we have bass, we have some little perch. I have kids over here fishing almost every day. So they're definitely in these retention ponds.
I don't know if you mentioned this, but in our Public Works, Brett, I think you told us how much those units cost, and it's pretty significant, isn't it, to replace? It's not a small amount of money.
Yeah, the motor itself, without all the things attached to it, is $1,600 a pop. So this is twice now that this has happened.
Anybody else have any questions or comment? Other person Peyton?
Just, I guess, quickly, procedurally, if we create a prohibition ordinance, what are the punitive actions that end up coming with that?
Yeah, so this, this ordinance is technically a... Yeah, so this, this ordinance is technically under the nuisance chapter. So I believe there's like a reference back to, like, Chapter 1 of your code. So basically, the, if you were to be caught fishing in one of these ponds, it would be a citation, and it would be in line with your citation forfeiture amounts. So it's just a fine.
Yeah, I think, Brett, you can explain this, what you're going to do down there. You know, we're not trying to catch people, you know, fishing down there. We're just trying to deter them from doing it.
Correct. We're trying to protect our assets, and ultimately, the water quality, that's why the aeration devices are there. We won't put signage up in this particular area. I'll send a letter to the neighborhood explaining why this ordinance was necessary. But the main thing will be signage that we'll put around.
Brett, on the signs, will you say that, you know, if caught, we find, or what is, how do, what is the verbiage that you will actually use?
Yeah, I'll create verbiage, but typically, we reference the ordinance and the penalty on the sign, the reference, the ordinance number. And so that typically, if you put, you know, penalties, maybe, we don't put a dollar amount on there because that can change over time, we reference the actual ordinance number.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on this one? Hearing none. So this is the first reading, which means it'll be back more than likely at the next meeting. Next item is Resolution 124, 2023. And as part of the new alders, we need to assign them to committees. And our, we have an ordinance that says that on our six standing committees, we have to have one alder from each district on each committee. So really, what that breaks down to, in this particular case, is we have positions available in District 1 for Public Works, and then the Community Affairs Council Policy, which we often refer to as CACP. So I would be looking to appoint Christina to those two committees. And then Patrick would be District 4. The positions that would be available for the District 4 would be Public Safety, and then the Park and Recreation Committee. And then what we do is, every April after the election, we have reorganizational meetings. So we, we have the council members submit requests for what committees they would be on, and then I try to honor as many as I can. And then I bring the full load of those appointments in April. So basically, at this point, what we're asking Christina and Patrick to do is fill the vacancies that were created. And I don't know if we're best to do that individually, or if we just do them all at once, or does it really even matter? So we have, for District 1, Public Works and CACP, and for District 4, Public Safety and Park and Rec.
Yeah, I think you could do them all at once.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is somebody willing to make?
I'll make the motion to approve the appointments as stated.
All right. Second by Alder Person Schumacher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. And I think what will happen is that the staff person, or the, and/or the committee chairperson will probably reach out to you, and that can let you know when the meetings are, if you don't already know.
Tomorrow night.
Huh?
Tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah, there is one tomorrow night. Yeah, if you're available, we can talk to you after the meeting about that. I think it's, yeah, tomorrow's going to be a Zoom-only. And then we can get you a breakdown and show you where you can go to try to, as much as you can, get caught up on where we're at. And maybe a visit with the staff member, if you're available, would help you do that. If not, you can go through and read some minutes from the previous meetings. Okay.
I just want to say that in the chat, I put the language that Attorney Manthe talked about for the newly appointed folks.
Oh, okay. You put on that?
No, it wasn't on the agenda.
No.
President Hirsch, do you want that language changed in your motion, then?
Yes, but I'm trying to figure where that was. We never even brought that up yet. I don't think it was on the agenda. It was in the packet, but it wasn't actually listed on the agenda.
No, that was after the motions to appoint, I swore in each council person.
Item number six.
Interview is appointment, administration of authent, seating of new elder person, but doesn't say.
Because you made the motions to appoint them, and the assumption was we're going to appoint them until April. And I think that's part of your motion.
Right. Yep. So that's the language that should be there.
So, Dave, that's the language we need to make sure you have to give the candy, or whoever's going to do the minutes. Okay. Did we just vote on this last one, though? This last track?
Yep, we did.
Okay. All right.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's all we had for tonight, so I would entertain a motion. Mieske, is there a second? Jensen? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Question for you, it's on your phone.